We did publish this as far as open this meeting, okay. All right, so I'll call Phil up to.
They're going to roll.
Oh, yeah.
I'll have the clerk call her, oh, thank you, Bob.
Commissioner Shadwick, Commissioner Spark.
Here.
Commissioner Wiggson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Yes, we have.
All right, I work better off a piece of paper here.
Sorry about that. Kevin, Mr. Phil Smith, thanks. I appreciate the commissioners being willing to meet this morning. So, the subject of today's special commission meeting is to talk about a potential application by the county to the state of Kansas for their base, which is Building a Stronger Economy Grant through the Spark process. So commissioners are aware of a number of applications that are circulating in the community. Lauren Driscoll with the City of Salina came over and did a presentation to us a couple weeks ago. But there's, the item that we want to talk about today is in addition to the ones that you all have already seen. And it's from two of our local universities who are asking the county to be an applicant on their behalf. So what we would like today is to give you the information and, you know, if you all agree, have you authorized the county to submit that application on their behalf? So you are aware of the housing need in the community and the fact that the county has committed to partner with the City of Salina on addressing that housing need. We've already committed a million dollars for one project and we have, at your last regular meeting, you authorized the chair to sign letter commitment for up to another million to match city funding for a potential base grant on one of four projects. The city commission is also meeting in special meeting today, though will be meeting this afternoon. And in preparation for that, Deputy City Manager Jake Wood put together sort of where we are on projects. The Dreever project and the Holmes Road project are both being submitted by the city if the city commission approves that. The city, rather than the other two projects that you heard about, the Magnolia project or the Clarity and Collins project, the city is not moving forward with either of those at this time in the base process, but they are potentially looking at another housing development, which is called Aeroplanes. It would be back behind Magnolia, sort of off of Centennial Road. And they're looking at that as a third potential project. In addition, the Salina Community Economic Development Organization is planning to submit a base grant application for some industrial park wastewater and rail realignment that would potentially benefit Great Plains, allow their expansion sort of to the north at their North Street facilities. So those are the applications that we know about. And then there's the one today, which again, if you all approved, would be submitted by the county. So at this point, I will just go ahead and turn it over to Doctors Starkey and Thompson with K-State Salina and Kansas Wesleyan University to kind of walk us through their project, what they're proposing, and how the county can play a role in that. So who's up first?
Matt Thompson, President of Kansas Wesleyan. Thank you all so much for having this special meeting and hearing our request. Dr. Starkey and I have been working on this proposal to make sure that we can provide good and adequate housing for our students and also remove students from the community who are living in homes right now or in apartments and bring them back to campus. And doing so creates obviously more space within the community to use existing housing while new housing is being built in other parts of the community. The way that, as I understand, the base grant works is that we are asking for this to be a collaborative project, I think, because it helps the community overall and it helps, I think, our application do this jointly. Otherwise, we have to do this as two separate applications going in. As I understand, again, there's no commitment from the county. The match will come, it's required, 25% match will come from each of our universities. And we have those funds designated already to do the match that's required, which is 25% of the project. And so for Kansas Wesleyan, what we're looking to do is to build 35 tiny homes, which are small, thousand-square-foot buildings that'll be along Highland Street on the kind of the west edge of campus. And that'll allow us to house up to 100, sorry, 27 tiny homes that'll allow us to house up to 135 students, again, bringing those students back to campus, but also allowing for growth for us in the future with these new homes. These are five-bedroom homes, five individual bedrooms. On the first floor, there'll be a little kitchenette as you come in, two bedrooms downstairs with a bathroom in between in the living room and washer and dryer. When you go up the stairs, there's another sitting area, and then three bedrooms sharing a bath up there as well. As we visited, the students are very excited about this concept and the idea to live in more independent housing, but on campus, because everything else we have right now is dormitories. So we're looking to do that. We also think our grant, everybody didn't say this, is stronger as a joint effort moving forward because we're trying to collectively address issues, not independently address issues that are affecting our community. Happy to turn it over to Dr. Starkey, but also happy to answer any questions from me directly first if you prefer.
You have land at $500,000 that's not currently owned.
That's correct.
And now that this is public, is that price going to go up?
Well, those homes probably are valued at about $250,000. There's just three properties that we do not own.
Okay.
So we're trying to be aware of that issue.
Right.
My question is, how much money has the university received so far from federal ARPA funds and everything connected with COVID?
That's a great question. Part of that's been different allocations. We've received money over the last two years that was direct student aid, probably about $1.5 million. And that's all money that had directly flowed to students. We couldn't put it on their accounts. It was checks we wrote to them. So we receive it, but it goes directly to students from us. We've probably received another $2.5 million in recovery funds that were allowing us to do return, save campus returns, just like other institutions were. This would be the first set of money that we've applied for outside of the PPP money, which we also did apply for and received. And that was forgivable.
You kind of cut me off at the pass, actually. You could see where I was headed. And that is why, haven't you spent this money on housing?
Sure.
And you kind of answered it.
Right. Well, and again, that wouldn't have been in the allow books. Yes, sir.
I heard that in your response.
Yes, sir. Great question.
I should ask Phil when he was up there, but I'll ask you, I'm sure he'd answer it. How much money is in this central base grant available?
It's 100 million statewide.
100, okay, I've heard that. So.
We've talked about this, but you're totally forgiven if you don't remember that we talked about this, because there's so much going on right now. But the State Spark Committee, you know, there's ARPA, which the state calls Spark.
We got 10.5.
Yeah, well, we got 10.5 of CLFRF ARPA, which is different than the state's SLFRF. Well, they, the state ended up getting a total of 1.6 billion. They've committed 100 million to base. They've also got a separate process going on for 731 million. And in that process, they were taking ideas. So I went ahead and submitted the university housing as an idea for that 731 million as well, as the potential for this, because those idea submissions did not commit us to anything, they're just ideas. This would be the first formal application, which would actually commit the county to administering the grant.
And the acronym for base?
Building a Stronger Economy.
Thank you.
Spark is, I don't know, the K is Kansas. It's like supporting something and rebuilding Kansas. It's, yeah.
Government of its finest.
More acronyms, the better, sir.
Thank you for clarifying.
The format for this is that these applications can only come from certain entities, is that?
There's a fairly broad array of entities. We believe that Kansas Wesleyan would qualify to apply on its own. K-State Salina, because it's a component unit of K-State in Manhattan, and there's some messiness with that, it's easier if the county applies. But as Dr. Thompson said, the real reason is to show that it's a community effort, not just the individual universities.
Other than administering the grant, there's not real, there's no cost to the county, is that correct? Really, this becomes pass-through money to you, but again, we believe you would be a stronger entity to make the application than us individually. Is that fair?
Yes, and I will also say, base, housing is an eligible use, but we have to tie housing to economic growth, which Saline County has a strong case for that, right? We've had all this economic growth, we're continuing to have economic growth, we need housing. But it is, I will be 100% candid, it is a bit of a stretch in terms of the state's thoughts. So when they, when they rolled out their example program, you know, housing is, you know, on the list of things, but their example programs were things like industrial parks and that kind of thing. So, because it's really targeted, this 100 million is targeted for economic expansion. And so that's why I went ahead and submitted it in that other process as well, because we want to get our hands on the money, but we want to get our hands on the money out of the correct pot of money.
So speaking of those pots, the 10.5 that we got from ARPA.
Yes.
This isn't coming out of that.
This is not touching that.
Gotcha.
We've already committed 2.5 of that 10.5 to housing. 1 million, as I said, is already committed to the joint program with the city. The second million, you authorize the chair to do that if the city submits. And then we've got 500,000 that we'll be discussing next Tuesday as a potential program for housing rehab. So we are absolutely committing 2.5 million of our 10.5 to housing in the community.
And we've already done some of that.
And we've already done some of that.
And I guess my first thought was, I was a little worried that we were running that dry. But you've cleared that up, so we won't go any further, that's fine. So if the state says no on this, what happens? What are we on, are we on the hook for anything?
So we're not on the hook as the county, but I'll let the universities speak to their point, because I think they do have sort of backup plans that would allow them to still do something, not all of the project.
For us, we have the $10 million committed at this point. We would move forward with our project. We can build incrementally, so we can build houses as we have money, which is a plus to part of how we design this project and, again, it meets our needs better. The 5 million from the state will allow us to do the whole project.
Sure.
So we just wait to do the rest, as we got more funds.
Sure.
Because this is a special meeting, is this time sensitive? Is that why we're meeting?
It is, it's due Monday.
It's due Monday, okay.
Yes.
I want to thank you.
Yeah, next Tuesday, I've been a day late. But, you know, I think the point is, and I think you all realize, is this is kind of a once-in-a-generation and maybe hopefully, maybe more like once in multiple generations, this sort of money is moving around. And so we are putting our request in multiple ways, partly because we, as we understand it, the state, the state level, they are coordinating. So they may each say if it's better here than there, but if we don't put it in there, we won't get that opportunity. So by putting it in multiple places, hopefully the state coordinating group will make sure we do get funded. And so that's our intent here.
This application is going through the county, not the city, to show support, to show the support from all of us?
Each entity can submit a maximum of three applications in this particular pot of funding. And so, as I mentioned, the city has already got their three. So we needed other entities. Skeeto is doing one, the county would be doing one if you approve.
My concern, Phil, and I'll still direct this to you, because my concern is, if the county applies for other money, is this, are you saying that this is the only thing that we will apply for out of this 100 million?
Yeah, this is the only application that has been brought.
We, as a county, cannot apply for any more money?
We, as a county, could apply for two other things if you create.
But they have to go to that specific, I'll back it up. In other words, this is going towards housing, but it's actually going to benefit two entities.
Well, our pitch, of course, is that it's going to benefit the whole community, because it'll free up 450 current rental spaces in the community to allow for employers to house people in those.
Well, I think, I think we're really, I don't know, 5% is what we're asking for. And the state of Kansas has not been, you know, when they look at things population-wise, and we're sure not 5% of the population are we are about.
But we're well over 5% of the economic development that has been announced by this current administration. So I think there is, and the city and, you know, we've been involved in some of these conversations, but the city certainly more so, in conversations directly with the Lieutenant Governor. We'll be going tomorrow again as part of Salina at the State House and talking with Lieutenant Governor, as well as Senator Clays and some other folks. And so the state is really aware of the need and acknowledges that Salina, Saline County, is a little bit unique in our housing need compared to other parts of the state. So I'm not saying we're going to get the money, but I'm saying I think we have as decent a shot as any other part of the state.
Further on his, because I think he and I are on the same point about this, is this hamstringing us down the future, you know, of applying, except for the deadline's Monday, and I don't see anything else coming up by Monday. Does that make sense?
Right.
Other than the county itself.
Yeah, but I don't.
I'm not saying we would apply between now and then, but I'm really leery, I'll be honest with you.
You know, we.
That this will do exactly as you.
So I will say, the, we talked about that a little bit, you know, and again, this particular pot of money is targeted to economic development opportunities. And so housing is a piece of that. But in terms of other economic development opportunities, really the only thing, in addition to what's already going on with, you know, One Vision and Schwanz and Great Plains and all the entities, Vortex in the community, the only other thing that was a true sort of industrial park kind of a development is that one that Skeeto is submitting, which is to realign the rail to facilitate that expansion. And the rest of all the applications in the community that have been brought to our attention or the city's attention are housing-focused.
And we're going to be looking at a strong pot of money here, if you take what the city is trying to do. Now, you've mentioned Skeeto, I don't know who else is involved, the county. This sounds to me like it's going to be well above, I don't know, 10 to 20% of the total pot.
Oh, absolutely.
And I just don't, knowing full well how the state works.
Yeah.
I don't see Salina getting their fair share, no matter what we ask for. But we're, we're asking for our fair share, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll stop there.
Well, I'm comfortable with asking.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't see why you wouldn't ask.
The bottom line and the old story is it doesn't hurt to ask, so. And we know we won't get it if we don't ask for it.
That's true.
So it doesn't hurt to ask multiple times.
Yes, and I don't, I really don't see a downside for asking for this particular pot of money. You know, if this were, just as an example, if this were K dot money and we were asking for a transportation improvement on behalf of the universities, then we would have other county projects that would, you know, be more in direct competition with that. But we don't really have a county project for this particular pot of money. And so that's why I don't really see a risk in asking on this particular one.
And going back to Commissioner Shadwick's question or remark, Monday is the deadline. After Monday, anything that comes along has a new set of rules.
Correct.
New applications and all that.
Correct.
So we just don't have anything on our plate coming.
Right.
Before Monday, other than this.
So I'll let Dr. Starkey talk a little bit about it.
We don't know, we rule.
Yeah, I think, I think first, a couple of things to think about are that collectively, the universities in this community, we add about $100 million annually to the economic development through transient guest tax, through other elements, through students living in the community, through the faculty and staff that live in the community. We, over the last five years, both of our campuses have experienced a 40% growth in enrollment at Kansas Wesleyan, 50% growth in enrollment at Kansas State Salina. A lot of that is due to the promise that the universities made when we did attract Schwanz to the community, Kubota, One Vision, all of that was due to our ability to help grow the workforce in the community. So from an economic development perspective, this is critical. 30% of Kansas Wesleyan students currently live out in the community, 70% of our students currently live out in the community, because we haven't had the housing available to house students on our campus. We've lost this last year, because we're at capacity at both institutions, about 86 students who would have come to Salina to attend university, but they could not find adequate housing in Salina. Some of our students are living as far away as Wichita and Lawrence and driving three days a week to attend classes, because that's how, that's where they can find housing. So from an economic development perspective, not only do we have the ability, that we recruited these companies here, and the university system made a promise to be a partner in helping to grow their workforce, but we're also losing a lot of dollars to other communities, because we don't have the adequate housing here. And this, really, the concept of applying jointly came from the Lieutenant Governor and some of the conversations the city has had, as well as the university met last week. And he reinforced that, that the purpose of the base grant fund and the Spark funds are for community revitalization. And together, the story that we can tell, Salina having really four institutions of higher education in the community is huge. No other community besides Kansas, Kansas City has that. It's a unique story to tell for the state of Kansas. We do it collectively, we don't compete with each other, we partner in all the different areas that we do for the benefit of the community. And the Lieutenant Governor recognizes that, and that's where he thinks this is about transforming communities and our ability to collectively transform Salina through these projects is huge for the revitalization around Kansas Wesleyan, as well as around the Salina Airport Authority, because that's where a lot of the industries are being recruited to, to fill the areas out there as well, too. So I wanted to make those two points. But in particular, for our particular project here, we are, because we have to, we don't have a choice, because we're losing enrollment and have to fulfill the needs of the community. We will break ground, probably next month, on a 100-bed residence hall. That has been bonded, it's being financed through the Kansas State University. That has been bonded, it's being financed through the Kansas State University Foundation, because we do not have the funds to do it, but we don't have a choice, we either remain the size that we are, or we don't grow. And so we have to take on this debt one way or the other. So the ask that we have is that our product really needs to be two phases. The first phase is a 104-bed residence hall that will house freshman students. That also, the ability to house students on campus, which Kansas Wesleyan has been able to do, increases the retention rates for universities. If they get on campus, they form a community, they stay in the community for four to six years. That's our goal with this first phase of the building project that we have here. Get freshman students in a residence hall, get them to form a community and stay. The funding that we're requesting now will help us to be able to immediately move forward with Phase Two. So Phase One of our residence hall complex will be completed in August of 2023. Hutton is doing the entire product design build, so it's ready to go, we'll break ground and start the construction in March. But with your, with the assistance from the BASE grant, we'll be able to move forward as soon as that project is done in August of 2023, with the construction of a 104-bed apartment complex. And that would be two, three, and four-bedroom apartments that would bring an additional 100 students out from the community. So collectively, right now, we have about 323 units in the community that are being held by our students. The other thing that I think is important for these two projects is that we can manage these projects much quicker than some of these other 1,800 units that are being developed in the university, or in the community. That's going to take five years to get some of those construction products completed, where within a period of 12 to 18 months, we can start freeing up some of these units for the, for the other industries here in town, which are currently under a crisis situation, in trying to find places for their employers to live.
Those are all good points, but it's the state's going to decide that.
Yeah, the state's going to decide it. But to your point, it's, it is, and to Dr. Thompson's point, it's one-time money.
Yeah.
And the ability for us collectively, as a community, and I've been so impressed with the city, the county, the universities, the industries here, we've all come together to try to figure out, what are the priorities, and what do we need to really be able to transform the community in the way that this money is meant to do? And we were at a really good place before this money became available, and trying to figure out, we scrambled for the last two years, trying to figure out how we do this, and then this money becomes available. If anything good came out of COVID, it's the pot of money that could really transform the community in a way that we really would not be able to do if this money was not available.
Well, you was talking earlier about you, you're going to break ground on these already. Whether you get the money or not, things are going to happen. It'd be a smaller part. So you've already got the engineering all done, the bids all, already coming in? You've already got bids, you've already got contractors?
We are, we are not as far along.
Okay, I'm sitting here going, with all the construction that's going on now, is this even a possible thing to get started and proceed with?
We have commitment from Hutton.
Okay.
And so they've been working on, yeah, there are.
Okay, cool, that's, that's what I was just wondering to myself, yeah.
Yeah, we have architectural renderings, and we've been talking to folks, but we don't have commitments yet.
Okay.
Partly because we have another step still.
Gotcha.
My question, Dr. Stark, would be, if this is already bonded and funded through the endowment?
It's not funded through the endowment. They're a lender, it's not funded at all, they're serving as our lender.
Okay, I hear you, but if, how will that affect, you think, the thinking from the state? You know, they know you've already bonded this out, and, and so they're going to, I think they're going to look at it and say, well, they don't need this, because they've already got.
They, they know, and this is what we talked to last week, Lieutenant Governor and Senator Clays about, they know that really, our money is to help us get to Phase Two quicker. Because if we can't, it will take us about 10 years, if we complete Phase One right now, in order for the revenue to build up enough from the Phase One product for us to be able to begin, on Phase Two, it'll take about 10 years. If we can pay off half of that debt through some of this money right now, we can start the construction on Phase Two immediately.
Early on, I think it was Phil that mentioned that, that going through Kansas State University in Manhattan would be a messy process, or I don't remember what he exactly said, but it would be difficult to do it that way. Why is that?
Because Kansas State University, first of all, it's a, right now, the application process, if we did it jointly, would be a joint application between a private institution and a state institution, which does not work at the state level. One of us would have to serve as the custodial of the grant, and there's no mechanism for us to go back and forth and transfer that money. The other element is that Kansas State University, so your question about what kind of funds have we already received? Our campus received about $600,000 that had to flow directly to students. We have not received any other money from Manhattan through any of the other funds available, because it all goes to Manhattan. And so we don't get any other funds. This is really, this particular opportunity is the only opportunity we have to get funds like this for our campus.
It seems pretty unique, in that I tried to do as much homework on this as I could with short time I've had, which was 24 hours. But I have found no one who can tell me that another state-funded Regent's University has received funding like this before, or made an application for funding like this in conjunction with the city or a county.
Yeah, and I think it's really because it's a three-party entity, because we're doing it jointly as a university within the community, that is driving this. We could do it, he could do it separately, I could do it separately, but again, it was Lieutenant Governor Toland who said, the real impact and the ability to really land this money is if you go after it collectively as a community, because that's where the transformation occurs.
That, that seems a unique statement to me, knowing full well how, I've been around Topeka for a long time, and that, the way they work, I find that my eyebrows are raising.
Well, the number of applications, the number of applications that they have for all of the money here, it's going to be a unique situation for them to try to figure out how they, how they do that. And I think our goal is to get as much money as we can for the community through this process. And we're definitely a big part of this community, who contribute a lot to the, to the quality of life in the community. And, and we feel like we deserve a shot at some of this money, because it does not, and it will not come around again. And the private institutions do not have really a good access to many of the state funds, and this is really one of their only shots to participate in this process from the state level.
It's too bad we can't send the both of you to Topeka to present your case. Selling us is probably pretty easy, but.
Yeah, to your point is, your hesitancy about what Topeka will do, I understand, but let them make that decision. I mean, let's not cut it off at the knees before they even get it, so.
Even if they give us.
But I do, I do understand, yeah, but.
Even if they give us a million dollars, it's 500,000 more than what we have right now.
Well, my initial hesitancy on this was, I thought, it was my ignorance, thinking this came from the 10.5 million. And I was just like, there's, this is not a good use of all of that funds, where we've got some things coming down the pike. So anyway, so, you know, I feel better about the state having to make this decision, it's a different pot of money. The county's not on the hook for anything if they get turned down. So I appreciate, I appreciate the presentation and helping clear things up for me.
I believe that we have an opportunity to support both these universities, and I think we should embrace it and do such. And deadline's Monday, more things might come down the pipe later on, but for now, I feel like we need to show our support and put in the application for both these entities.
Is there more presentation, or this, so it's time for comments and so forth, is what I hear?
Sure.
Obviously, you can tell, there's a lot of hesitancy in my, on my part. Make no mistake about it, that I am, I'm a lifelong, I've lived at Salina longer than any of you. And reveals my age a little, you can tell that, doesn't matter. I'm supporter of Kansas Wesleyan University, my dad went to Kansas Wesleyan University, my uncle went to Kansas Wesleyan University. I attended Kansas State University. Those universities in the city of Salina, county of Celine are very important to me. But my hesitancy and reluctance on this is the fact that I get something as major as this, it almost feels like it's being crammed down my throat, which I know it's not. Don't, don't, let me mislead you there. I'm, still haven't even made up my mind. I'm probably, I went from no to probably yes. But I just wish we could get things like this a little quicker, in some of the details that weren't here for me, it makes it difficult, but.
So do we, Commissioner. Absolutely. This, the timeline on this whole process has just been incredible. This has all happened in the last month, both this 100 million and the other 731 million. It's the state, the, yeah, it's, the state really, you know, we, you all, collectively, with our 10.5 million, you all took really proactive steps last summer, right? We had a plan in August of what we were going to do with our money, and we've been working diligently toward that plan. And, you know, I'm bringing you sort of one, one report a month, kind of, is how we've been kind of rolling this out. And we've been working toward that, but the state really, they sat on the funds for a period of time, and then they just sprang it all on us. So I completely understand what you're saying, absolutely. I wish it were different.
Well, I've lost my train of thought where I was headed with a lot of this, so I'll stop.
And I'll just say, and of course, being here in Salina for over 50 years, it's like, it's amazing of the transformation that is going to be taking place with these two universities. I just, whether we can be a deal, and this is one of those things where all we're doing is allowing the county to go ask for this money. To me, is that's what this is about, is we're just allowing the county to go ask for it. And we have no play in it, really, at all, except asking for the money. And I'm going, I'm all for that, so, yeah, I'm buying it 1,000%. This, that's me.
Well, if there are no further questions or comments, I don't see any public comment, but I think it would be great to just have a motion to authorize either myself or the chair to sign the application and submit it on Monday.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize you to sign the application for this project with Kansas Wesleyan University and Kansas State University Salina. Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? If not, I'll pull for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Good luck to both of you.
Let's hope it does fly, yeah. That'd be the ultimate, wouldn't it?
It would. It would. Thank you.
For the city, the county, and the universities, for sure, yes.
Do we have anything else on, or nothing else?
No, there were some accounts payable to be signed, since we did not have a regular meeting this week, but otherwise, we can adjourn.
All right. We will be adjourned, Graham.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Your time.
Nice meeting you.